Me councillor, we have myself, Brian Khan. Patrick, you're there?
Anne Shaw.
Good man, thank you.
Hi, Anne Shaw. Is that any good, Patrick, that Irish, eh?
Yeah.
Go to me and my good.
For hand, for hand that I know.
Oh, you're speaking the wrong man, sir, in Irish, because I haven't a clue, eh?
I spent a few years about coming so that.
What do you call it, they can speak Irish up there, right?
Me and Colly, I went to school there together, he, he was teaching me.
All, all right then, I, I think, well, I'll block out a quarter, say I'll give it a five past, um. Just rimmed on, a little bit of time at this time of the evening, and, um. Anybody wanting, anybody wanting to get home that's using the, the roundabout in Leford, there's an accident. At the, as the roundabout in the traffic jam was out to Letter Kenny Road, past Roskier pub.
Mm-hmm.
So, so there's a big, it's a big delay there for everybody involved that's using that. Um, first, welcome everybody, uh, thanks for coming. And first of all, just, it's only my, I think it's probably, just a second, that's my chairmanship of this committee. So I'll start off by saying that, uh, asked everybody, all of us, uh, to be courteous and to just get on with the business, uh, uh, in a courteous, uh, and manner of fashion. So if we can start the meeting, I think that the meeting was called to discuss Frank had issues involving housing issues, MICA issues in the Leford Stenarder area. So if I may open it, I'll ask Frank for to lead out on that now. Go ahead, Frank.
Well, first of all, thank you chairman for, for bringing about this meeting. I think this is a very important meeting for the members of the Stenarder and Leford Municipal District. Um, it came to my attention from, from sources within the council that Letter Kenny, Mulford MD and Dennis Owen MDs are being prioritized over us. And that's why I, I called for this meeting today. Now, the first thing I want to discuss is the fact that the, the towns and villages, sixteen of them, I put it at, at, um, and maybe somebody can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but St Johnston, Port Hall, Smokey, Leford, Ballindreth, Refo, Convy, Castle Funn, Kelly Garden, Les Schoolie. Excuse me, The Cross, Drumkin, Stenarder, Balbe Fei, Glenfann and Braca. These are the towns and villages that, that we and our Leford Stenarder Municipal District have, and that's who we represent. Uh, almost thirty thousand people. So, um, going back to the nineteen eighties, every piece of stock that we have must be now tested. Every single SI house is in that area as well, from St Johnston to Glenfann to Braca. Uh, must be looked at to see if there's any problems structurally with these properties. Now, I won't say this, I won't accept remedial works on any of these properties that test either for MICA, pyrite or pirouette. It has to be option one and option one only, which is complete demolition. Um, I would call today as well that we now begin the process of giving every single resident who has this problem an exemption from paying any rent until they're given new accommodation or, um, new accommodation is bought for them to re-house them. I think it's, it's a breach of contract as far as I'm concerned, but I want to start off first of all with St Johnston. And it came to my attention from phone calls I got back a number of weeks ago concerning a landlord who bought a, a number of houses off of the developer in the estate called Railway Park in St Johnston. And some of the members will be aware of, of, uh, this estate. This estate was, uh, built by a developer and got into bother during the recession and Donegal County Council bought eight of these properties. Now, I'm not going to name the residents, I, I'm going to name one particular resident because I have their permission, but number one, uh, the first house the council owns on it, um, there, there's a, uh, one of the people living on it have a severe, uh, disabilities. Number two, uh, uh, medical problems. Number three, I can't name them because they don't have their permission. Number four, Shauna and Desi Kern. Um, what do you call, uh, Desi had a stroke in two thousand and fourteen. The council promised them to build a house, to build a, a disabled room.
Uh, Frank, Frank, just a second. Are you confirming, uh, that you have the permission of those people for discussing their medical?
Yes, yes.
And medical evidence?
Yes.
You're confirming that?
Yes. And, uh, uh, that's why I haven't named the other people. But anyway, number, uh, there's number five, number six, number seven and number eight as well in, in that estate. Now, Desi was promised, uh, a disabled house. Uh, no, sorry, a disabled bathroom and, uh, disabled bedroom. The council, uh, came back what, after the occupational therapist examined the needs of, of Desi. Now, the council, the council then said that there was problems at the back of the house. Now, I believe that the council didn't build this because they knew the house had MICA. But Desi had a further stroke in two thousand and fifteen and a, a third stroke in two thousand and sixteen and has, has, uh, no power in his right arm and has no, uh, has very poor power in his right leg. Plus, he's a diabetic. This man has serious medical problems. And the council have done repair works to these properties, which is only a stick and plaster. But more importantly, this has not been brought to our attention in the MD. Engineers have not brought it, the council staff have not brought it and the executive have not brought it to our attention. Now, this estate, along with yourself, councillor Crawford, you and me both made representations, a lot of representations concerning the problems that that estate had with sewage problems, which we got resolved at the end. After five or six years, we eventually got it resolved. But my opinion is that Donegal County Council also, and I haven't, I'm trying to get this confirmed, also leased the other six properties off of the developer who built the development at the time they bought those houses. And when those houses were up in the ten year lease, they then sold them, the, the developer then sold them to the current developer, the current landlord, a, 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 a man called Martin O'Kane from, from, uh, Dungivon, uh, and he didn't know he was buying MICA properties. So he's trying to fix it, he's trying to, he's trying to.
Just, just for, for the record, uh, for the record, as chairman, I have to say that what you, the people that you name there, you do from your own experience and not with the express permission of this meeting, so.
Well, fir- first of all, first of all, um, well, I won't name the landlord again and, um, the landlord in question who bought these properties did not know, in my opinion, that he was buying MICA properties. Now, I raised this issue with the CE, John McGlathlin, and the director, Joe Peoples, concerning what I class as an unauthorized development because of the safety issues within the house, the six houses in question. Two of them have had the outer skins on, 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 on three walls, uh, rebuilt with the people living in the houses. But more importantly, we have two hap tenants in two of these houses. And the, the, I believe that the, the landlord is going to now start work in these two houses with these tenants in. Now, we haven't been told over the last number of weeks about the, about the inspections by our engineers concerning the complaints that I have made to our engineers and to the council concerning why these houses weren't identified when they were put into hap. Why they weren't identified from, from the investigations conducted under the hap rules, which in my opinion are not strong enough. Now, all, all the issues that are going on down there in that estate, we should have been, we, all those issues should have been disclosed to us. And they have not been disclosed to us. And the question has to be asked here today, how many other council housing estates are in the similar position at every other town and village that I named? And, and I mean, I'm asking the question here today for the council to verify, because the council's coming out with this, this, uh, thousand council properties affected by MICA. Well, I would put it closer to over three thousand properties. And then when you add the commercial properties that they have and the, the, the other types of properties that they have leased and rented, it's far, far higher than three thousand. Now, I want to go into the fact that we haven't even touched on the, all the housing associations, uh, like Apex and Convy, which I don't believe has MICA, but they need to be checked. Respond Housing in Refo, in my opinion, definitely has MICA. And Habitat and, uh, Habantech in Leford, which I don't think has MICA, but would need to be checked out that it's got MICA. And even their properties in Castle Funn, if they're going to use the properties that were existing, uh, only half built, they would have to be, they would have to be looked at to make sure that they don't have MICA in them. But hopefully they'll be all demolished for the new development that has been proposed by Habantech. But, I mean, we have to also be given from the nineteen eighties, all the turnkey developments that Donegal County Council have bought, purchased or built themselves since the nineteen eighties. And we're not being given that right up to the present day. Back a couple of years ago, we went around the county highlighting all these great fantastic developments that we have got now in Donegal County Council's books. But, as I've said, I've asked for the six brand new houses in, in cost even to be tested before the council actually purchases them. Because my belief is that the products in those houses, the concrete blocks and the concrete was purchased from the developer who bought the houses on behalf of the council from Cassidys. Cassidys Concrete Products. And this is where we have to know from all these turnkey developments and all these properties built on behalf of the council, we must be told, are these properties going to have problems with MICA, pyrite or pirouette? Now, the SPC for Housing Today set up a project team. Now, that SPC, in my opinion, and I mean, I'm going to say this publicly, they kept me off that SPC in the negotiations at the start of this council. And I, I'm, in my opinion, chairman, I believe they kept me off it because they knew I'd be asking these type of questions. But I won't accept anything other than demolition for any council owned property that, that has a problem with either MICA, pyrite or pirouette. Because I'm now accusing the council, if they attempt to go down the remedial route, that's breaking the law. Because they have no engineer that can indemnify these properties. But not only that, the tenants in these houses will not be able to get their homes insured for their contents. The council would need to answer, ask the question and answer the questions, what way are they going to insure these houses? Or will they get insurance? Will they get public liability insurance? Well, if anything falls off these houses, will the council, will be covered under insurance? And if anybody gets killed or seriously hurt, who's liable for it? Is it Donegal County Council or is it the government or the state liable for this? Because the whole thing, we're not being told, in my opinion, what we should be being told at our MD meetings. And I know councillor Crawford, that you have been trying to help those tenants the same way as I have been trying to help them. But I'm really concerned about the, about the person in the chair, the previous to you, that I would like to know if councillor, councillor Gary Dougherty was informed about, and, no, no, I'm not making any accusations, chairman. I'm not making any accusations. I'm not making any accusations.
Councillor Dougherty isn't here, so.
No, no, all I'm asking is if, if Gary could, could confirm to us, did the council tell him about any of the problems in this estate in St Johnston? Because I would be interested to know whether he did know or not. I, I don't believe he did know, but I think that the council needs to come out and clarify why they didn't inform us of the problems in Railway Park and the problems in other estates that we have in the Funn Valley. And I'm going to say this, and I won't say too much more, chairman. I'm demanding that we get the same treatment as the Letter Kenny and Mulford MDs and the Dennis Owen MD. We, uh, we have the same rights in the Funn Valley, which is, which is also the Leggins Valley. We have the same rights as those, as those, uh, MDs and we have the same rights as members of the council as those members in Dennis Owen, Letter Kenny and, uh, Mulford MDs. And I'm demanding today that our area be given the same rights, the same rights for our, our tenants. And I'll, I'll say this for the final time, you're in breach of contract. Under the law, you're in breach of contract for not giving people their, their proper properties to live in. And by doing plaster carous and sticky plaster jobs to those houses, in my opinion, the council should now, I'm proposing that the council now today, now make those houses exempt from rent. Don't be charging those tenants any more rent until you get a, 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 uh, new accommodation, either build them new accommodation or buy them new accommodation. Because what has been done to them to date, and I've given one example of, of Desi and Shauna, what they're going through, and, and I know for a fact, I can't name them because they don't have their permission. The other families are going through the same thing, but not only in St Johnston, but in, in Refo, Convy, Castle Funn, Port Hall, Leford, they're, these people are all going through the same. And we must stand up for these people and these social housing. We have to stand up for them and I know, chairman, that you will do your best to, in order to, to make the council answer the questions that we are asking. And I think it's only fair that we as members should have those answers. So thank you, chairman, for, for being patient and thank you for bringing about this meeting today. But I, I, we must have transparency and accountability at all times concerning the social, the, the social housing stock we have and, and also the, the commercial properties that are run by the council and the properties that the council are involved in, like the Funn Valley swimming pool. We need to know, is there any possibility that these buildings will be infected by MICA, pyrite or pirouette? And I'm asking, and I'm only giving the example of the Funn Valley, I'm giving it as an example. So I'm asking now today, start giving us the answers or I'll start asking for them on the Freedom Information Request. Because it's not good enough that when I ask a question in writing to the council, I'm not getting the answers. So thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Uh, does any other member wish to comment there, councillor Dean Dougherty? Have you gone? Nope.
Yeah.
Chairman?
Yeah, square, brother.
I just, I'm on the camera here. Yeah, chairman?
Yeah, have you now, yeah.
No, um, I was just, um, then keep the broadband better by keeping the camera off. No, just, just, uh, first of all, it's good to have this meeting today and, and Frank and I would have been at a meeting, um, yesterday morning and, and the North and West Regional Assembly as well, where there was, um, motions going forward as well to, to the government about, uh, about these concerns and MICA and, um, just calling for, um, hundred percent redress scheme, like, so. That was from the North West Regional Assembly, um, Jack Murray, Frank and myself were on that. Um, because as, as, um, a lot of the other counties are just becoming aware of, of the, the problem with MICA and pyrite and that kind of things and just is coming more to the fore, like. Unfortunately, Donegal's well ahead, you know, when it, when it comes to information on that. Even the public representatives down there are, 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 uh, the first time, I think Frank and I mentioned this was a couple of months ago and, you know, they, they were quite shocked, you know, they didn't think, they thought it was just a Donegal thing and then it was my old thing and now they hear it's going further afield, but, uh, really, um, I, I thought maybe we would be getting some kind of a report today and I presume that we will be, like, from Joe there, because, um, particularly from that, that's a long period from eighty-four to, to, um, to two thousand and eleven, but I'm, I'm told that it's considerable from, um, ninety-nine to two thousand and eighteen, but, but. I suppose really we're, we're going to have to get all these properties tested to see, you know, that what, what can be done, if anything, all the complete demolition. And I'm talking about council properties and, and, um, uh, had there was some work done to our Letter Kenny, uh, apparently MICA showed up in one part, but I think there's a report to go back to the council on that. But obviously today is about the Leford Stenarder MD and I am aware of, of houses and both public, um, council owned, private houses and private, sorry, council owned houses and private houses. But then as well too, as we know, it's not just in council owned estates or the ones the council bought. There's, the council has bought not a lot of houses, they're going to be, um, and various estates that there's some reports that they may, they may be making, so that, that, that's worrying too for the tenants that's there, you know, that. Um, and it would like, it would be good, you know, if, if they could get some kind of a report. I, I don't know, uh, has there been a complete assessment done yet, uh, around the county, what information you have? Um, I wouldn't like to thank you, Frank was saying there, that, that we're, we're getting short. Stick again, like in the Snarder MD, we always think that we're kind of, kind of left behind with the poor cousin here sometimes when it comes to Dennis Owen and, and Letter Kenny, but, um, I'll wait to hear back from you on that one. Um, you know, and just, just to say, look, everybody's getting very frustrated here, you know. And the people, the people are really come, uh, MICA or pyrite confirmed in their houses there particularly because we, we do seem to be getting very mixed messages as well coming from the department and from these committee meetings and, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm, we're thinking that, I think the minister said himself at one stage that the work concern are a hundred percent. This week now, department officials are saying that's not on the, the cards, it's seeming to be unkept now. It's a, a ninety-eight scheme, so that's not, that's what no public representatives would accept in Donegal. I think we've all made it very clear, but, um, I, I would, I would like to hear from Joe as to what his position um, in regard to all of these local, early houses, so I'll just wait until he has that, so thanks to you.
Thank you, councillor Dougherty.
I know, just, just, um, agree there with what was said there around. Like it's about time we started to get, we started to know the many houses in our areas, in our, in this one, this like, has this many council houses and obviously the, the private houses, but I think it's time that we, 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 we've some kind of start and these houses tested and those cease any partition of houses until, you know, it was the same as anybody's down a private house now, that's when they have to be tested before, before you buy it. And I'll be thinking that, that the council will do the same before they purchase another house, they would, uh, get them, get it tested in some way, I know it's, it's government, uh, decision around who tests, you know, around the, the, the cost of it and stuff, but that's something I think it needs to be looked at as a uh, cheaper and easier way to get houses tested than, than, uh, the, the six, around the six thousand and, and having these, uh, tests and send away for bags of it to get results, as, and I, I think we should be able to do it within our own country and, and would be a bit quicker. But no, I just, just, we, we agree with that, a lot with what Frank said there and, uh, we need some kind of answers and, uh, figures on, on our own housing stock, you know, that's all, Jack.
Thank you. Well, just, just for my own part, uh, first of all, uh, thanks everybody for contribution. There's the, the questions may be short there, but the information received or the information required is, is, is going to be immense. Uh, the problem is each day identifying itself in far, far more locations and people are worried, are now beginning to be worried going back further in years than would have been at the start of, of this, uh, problem. People are really worrying now with houses are going back into the eighties and I think that that's, that's important. I think it, it's also important to say that I had a reply from Housing at a previous meeting and the houses that they had identified were, they were identified through, through, um, visual inspection where the houses, like, were exhibiting cracking consistent with the use of defective blocks. And I think it's important to realise that, that the, the process going forward will, will have to involve a far more detailed form of testing and that's not going to be easy, but that's something that, that, that has to happen. Um, I also think that we should ourselves real, um, there, there is a distinction between what the council can do and what's expected of government. And I think that it's very important that the, the government, there's been no misunderstanding that each MD and each councillor from all parties have supported a call for one hundred percent redress. And while we're not properly to those discussions as, as councillors, they are ongoing. And it's important that the people who are negotiating know that to have the support of the elected representatives which in this MD and I'm sure, and other MDs have all expressed some reviews that they do support that. The council has faced, we'll go back to council housing staff and the council has faced with an immense task, uh, the immense task of, uh, identifying the problem and housing going back as councillor McVerde has suggested and on other properties and, and on different headings where council, where, where there's social housing provided to tenants. And I think that, uh, we'll, we'll ask the, it's Joe now and the council to explain how best they think that they will be able to meet the, the requests that will, because there is people who were never, who never thought that they would be in a position to worry about something like this. Who now find themselves very much in a position that they have to worry about something like this. And I think it's important that they know that, that action has been taken on their behalf by the landlord, which in this case is the council. Thank you. I'm going to let Joe.
Chairman, can I, can I just make, chairman, can I just make a correction? It's Shauna and Desi Gamble, I, I think I said Kern. Um, you'll, you'll know them well, as well, as well as me, but, um, I think I used, did I, did I use Kern or did I use Gamble?
You used the wrong name, councillor, but it's not for me.
Uh, well, it's Shauna, Shauna and Desi Gamble, so, okay, thanks, chairman.
Okay, Joe, did somebody or does there any? Joe, you muted there? Yeah, you're okay now, yeah.
Thanks, Chair. Um, no issue at all in terms of getting a profile of the houses that was constructed and the Stenarder MD going back, as far as our records show, so there'll be no issue in relation to that, back to eighty-four or eighty or whatever it is. Um, I don't have a number off the top of my head, but that'll be, that'll be easily, uh, pulled together. We'll get that pulled together early next week and get it circulated to the members. I would say as well that there's no question, I want to reassure members and tenants indeed, there's no question of, uh, any tenant being left behind in Stenarder or any house that needs attention in Stenarder being, being ignored. All properties that are, that require remedial works, that they'll all be assessed and considered appropriately and none will be left behind. And I think, as you said yourself, Chair, the visual inspections are showing up what's immediate, but it's quite clear with the passage of time, again, that, that is something that would concern us because in five years' time, an accident could show up. So the only, the only definitive way to establish for certain is through a testing programme. So there's no question about that, that's the only way to establish for certain. Um, in relation to this, the particular estate that councillor McVerde refers to there, there was a few questions there around, uh, whether houses were leased or when houses were leased. We'll get a full de, a full detail in relation to that, to, to all the members there, just for their information as well. Um, I don't, I don't know the detail of it just to hand, but we certainly get that circulated. Um, we are, I think councillor McVerde mentioned it earlier, we, we certainly need to set up a dedicated team to deal comprehensively with MICA and council houses and to begin to plan a programme of remedial works and all of the logistics that sit around that in terms of, you know, planning for alternative accommodation, temporary accommodation that might be used in particular locations that will enable tenants to rotate through that when their, when their house has been repaired. Um, probably a team that involves a different, a lot of different skill sets, engineers, clerks of works, um, tenant liaison, communications, all those areas have to be, uh, covered as part of the team. And we hope to get that team up and running pretty quickly. And then they will plan, based on current information, a remedial works programme for the thousand houses that we know about and others that, a lot, I would say undoubtedly come into the, come into the mix as well over time. Some were obviously more affected than others in terms of, uh, deterioration and will need early intervention and others might need intervention, uh, in the immediate term, but certainly there'll be no, uh, works done that are not going to satisfactorily resolve the issue. So it won't be, certainly won't be the council's intention to do, uh, work that would be subject to further, uh, damage occurring after we would do our work. So whatever works we do, it will be a Rolls Royce job in terms of the, the, the remedial works that are needed. But it is, logistically, it is a very, very significant task, uh, unprecedented uh, and the history of our country, I would say, given the scale of it. And it'll take a good few years for our social houses to remediate it. But the plan has to be put in place now, resources have to be put in place and the work has to commence. to be put in place now, resources have to be put in place, and the work has to commence, and the tenants have to be advised on an individual basis or through residents associations, specifically what the circumstances are in relation to their particular estate or their particular house. Because I think that's something that's very important, that we communicate that with tenants now, as we begin to see, uh, a plan being put in place to, to, to deliver the works over, over what will certainly be a number of years, members, there's no question about that. So I'd, I'd leave it at that, Chair, but I, I will get those, those pieces of information circulated to the members over the course of the next, the week.
Frank, you wanted back there?
Uh, just, just briefly, fo- first of all, uh, thank you, Joe, for your replies, but I, I, I have to say this, chairman, and say this through you, your good self, I'm not accepting remedial works. I don't want to have to read Dr Ambrose McCluskey's letter to, to, to the council and the information that he sent to the council along with other engineers. Remedial works is not acceptable. These have to be demolished, these properties, and the government who are responsible for this must put our stock back the way it is. Secondly, tenants' purchase scheme. It hasn't been mentioned how many tenants have bought their homes that possibly could have MICA, pyrite or piratite. The council needs to confirm that, I have already written, written about this, but I'm, I'm in the process of putting hundreds of, uh, Freedom of Information Requests together. And Joe needs to answer, are you going to give these people an exemption to pay in rent due to the fact that the council is in breach of contract? That's the law on it, as far as I've been advised, you're in breach of contract, you've supplied a home that is defective to our tenants, and every single one of these homes has to be identified. And I do agree with Joe that every property will have to be tested, otherwise you can't prove definitively if these products are in these properties. And yesterday, I got representations from County Lythrum, from a family who built a house in two thousand and five, whose house must, most definitely not been tested yet, but from the visionary reports has either MICA, pyrite or piratite. So it's from the whole western seaboard that this problem has arisen, and it's all down to the lack of legislation and the planning authority not, in my opinion, doing their job, closing up these quarries that have these irregular minerals in them. That's where the root of this problem lies. Some poor contractors who built these houses with these products are not to blame, but the problem is now that the people who supplied them with the blocks, concrete and other concrete products, and councillor Joe Sheridan in the Northwestern Regional Assembly yesterday asked a very important question, did these companies in Donegal sell concrete products all over the country? And the answer is, yes, they did. They sold these products all over the country. So we're seeing in Kerry, we're seeing in Limerick, we're seeing in Clare, we're seeing in Galway, Mayo, Sligo, Lythrum and Donegal, and even yesterday, Tipperary's now looking for a scheme for their own county. So this is a nationwide problem now, and government, in my opinion, must open the chequebook and start dealing with this problem. Because the local authorities are not geared up to deal with this. And I'll say the final thing I'll say, chairman, I told the C E of the council, Mr John McLaughlin, get your staff out of that application section because the public are going to blame them, and I don't blame them, I don't blame the public for blaming them, but get your staff out of that application section as soon as possible, because they're getting the blame for the problems with this government's defunctional redress scheme. Remedial works, Joe, you're on the working panel, Joe, you should not be using that word remedial works, you should be using option one, demolition only. And I'm, I'm, I'm pleading with you, Joe, as a, as a, as a neighbour of mine's and a neighbour of councillor Crawford's and a friend of ours, please stop using the word remedial works, please use the word demolition, it's the only option open to cure everybody of this disaster. So I'm asking you, Chair, for them to stop using the word remedial works.
All right, Frank, we have to call it at that and give Joe a chance to reply to that, because, Joe, do you want a comment?
Sorry, Chair.
Oh, you're okay, we can, uh, you're all right, you're there again, yeah.
I'm happy enough, Chair, to leave it at that, thanks.
Okay.
You're, you're mut- you're muted, Gerry, you're muted.
That's not a bad thing sometimes. Uh, the, the points have, the points have been well made and the questions have been asked, the executive has given, uh, a, um, they have given a commitment to come back with information now, even though it's over the holiday period, they said they would, they would respond, and I think we should leave them the opportunity to do that and realise, all of us, which we do, that the task is immense. So everybody's happy at that, I would thank everybody for coming, thanks for, for enabling the meeting, it's a place by turning up, and we'll leave it at that, so thank you, everybody.
Chairman, chairman, just, just one point, chairman, I'm, I'm very disappointed that councillor Harley and councillor Gary Dougherty are not here today. I'm ve- I have to put that on the record, they should have been here today, because they've been raising questions about this and they're not here today, I, I think it's ridiculous.
Frank, we're not, we're, we're not here to judge why anybody wasn't able to attend this meeting in short notice, so thanks.
But, chairman, I, I would say, Chair, you know, the important thing is here, and I've put out all councils and the, the partners that we get, so, as Frank said, we get, we get some of this detail and information back, because we, we are being asked all this every day about what's happening, and that, that's important, so we appreciate, you know, not to share the, Joe gives back concerns possible.
And I'm leaving it at that now, thank you very much, everybody, we're, we're going to, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.